You ready? Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. All right. You're probably wondering why I'm up here. I'm Teri Rio. I'm Director of Philanthropy. Mike Rambros and the senior team is on a retreat for today and tomorrow. So they're doing a session with a professional development coach. We do that frequently. We're starting with the senior team, and then they'll bring that back, and then it moves out to the rest of the management team. So we're still having the town hall meeting because we still have updates from all our departments. So you might see some new faces today giving reports. So today, I'm going to start by saying welcoming our new residents, Mr. and Mrs. David and Paula Kirsch in apartment 2608. So if you meet them in the hallway, I have, and say hello. And as usual, we're going to start with Maria LaSala, our spiritual coordinator, to offer some remarks. Maria?
Good morning, friends. I'm Maria LaSala, the spiritual care coordinator here at Whitney Center, and I'm always delighted to be with you. These past weeks have been somewhat difficult for this community. I want to begin my time with you this morning remembering friends whose lives came to an end since our last town meeting. Each death came as a bit of a surprise to us, causing us to catch our breath when we turned the corner by the library and saw the frame holding a familiar face and date. At those moments, we've been intentional about reaching out to one another, and we've reminded ourselves of the blessings of our lives. I want to invite you now to remember with me the lives of these friends. Harriet Leibowitz and Marvin Weiss, John Simon, and just yesterday Kay Collarin. They mattered in this community, and it is time for us to give thanks for their good lives so well-lived. I know that you have heard the news about Caitlin Willette, the nurse supervisor for the Health Center, who was in a serious car accident on her way to work on Tuesday morning. That news came as a shock to us all as well, as such news always does. Caitlin is in stable condition at Yale New Haven Hospital, and I ask that you keep in your prayers, in your thoughts, and in your hearts Caitlin, her family, and her colleagues and friends here at Whitney Center. I'm reminded of the ways people keep on living when things get tough, how somehow we keep going in spite of grief, in spite of sadness, in spite of worry and despair. How many of you remember the song "You'll Never Walk Alone" from the Rodgers and Hammerstein musical carousel? Remember that song? The song tells us to walk on through the wind and through the rain. We are told to walk on with hope in your heart, and it promises that at the end of the storm, there's a golden sky and a sweet silver song of a lark. It's a great song. In fact, I've been humming it in my head for the last few days. But if we are honest, the lyrics might sound a bit trite, especially in these days. When storms end, there are usually tree limbs all over, not to mention power outages and all sorts of other kinds of damage. And these days, it may again feel as if we are in a storm, being tossed and blown, and yet knowing we can walk on, and that gives us hope. We do go on, and we are not alone. Perhaps that is the good word for us today, reminding us that there is unity in our sorrow, unity in community, unity in hope. We've still got a bit of winter ahead, don't we? But there are encouraging signs that spring is coming. May we walk on with courage and with hope in our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, as always. Susie Weisinger, are you here? Okay. Susie's our president of our resident council, so I will move on to lifestyle services updates, and I'm going to start with Emily Aguilar, representing Facilities Department.
Good morning, community. I hope you're off to a great start this morning. My name is Emily. I'm the Director of Facilities. Tonight and today, we're actually preparing for another storm. Maintenance, security, residential services, and constructions are actually partnered up and preparing to ensure the safety and full access to the community. Although we expect the snow to arrive early morning tomorrow, I want to remind you to take extra caution when walking your dog outside in the morning hours. Please do not walk behind the trucks or behind the team's members with the snow blowers. We do have blind spots that we cannot see, so we do ask that if you are walking outside, use a safe path. Walk in front of us, not behind us. Let me give you two updates on housekeeping. Who are people coming in? With recruiting still a priority on our list, we've had some changes in staff. Some of you have noticed some shifting of our temporary housekeeping members. These are the members with mocks or with green shirts. These changes are taking place simply because we're filling vacant spots. With the amount of residents we service, it does get a little bit difficult to call each and every one of you that are being affected by these changes. So I do ask you to please be patient with us, and we thank you in advance for being understanding. Events setups is another conversation that has been coming up lately. Event setup has come up as an issue, and I wanted to point out some backend work, but we want you to understand what happens when events setups are put into our hands. There's a team of us that work together on events. Kaylee from Operations, Melissa from Resident Services. There's a lot of time and effort that is put into when we are creating an event and then the layout of the event. It is extremely important that anyone hosting an event must be specific with the setup or the layout of the event. My team follows a descriptive outline when setting up for events, and we actually have a tablet, and in that tablet, it tells us the type of setup, the type of chairs, and what it needs to look like. We do run into some issues when we are limited with personnel and when information is inadequate, not enough, or a last-minute change. That becomes difficult, though even though we do our best, we end up running into some issues. So I ask that if you're hosting an event, please provide Melissa with specific information to ensure we, in return, provide you with the accurate and timely setup. Now, if you have any concerns or issues related to housekeeping, I am located on the second floor, room number 226. I'm available via phone. I'm available outside. I run into a lot of you all the time outside. Please stop. Don't hesitate to stop and talk to us. Thank you so much. I think that's it, and I'm going to turn it over to Maria.
Hello, everyone, and thank you, Emily. As you can see, Whitney Center does take a village, so collaborating with all of the departments is an absolute necessity, and information is power. We can't emphasize that enough. So please never make assumptions when planning events because it happens every week or it's happened before, that all of the i's are dotted or the t's are crossed. There's always room for some change, and more than likely, that can happen. So again, thank you again for all of your patience and to Emily's team, as well as to Dining and anyone else that helps Resident Services do the things that we need to do, especially Melissa and Janet, of course. Thank you for attending today's meeting. For those of you who are new to the community, welcome, and with many new people to meet and greet, I will reintroduce myself to all of you. I am Maria Freida, Director of Resident Services. Along with Resident Services Supervisors Melissa DeGrande and Gil Gallin, we are proud to lead the Resident Services Associates as they share their customer-based services with you in reception, safety, security, transportation, and event planning. The Communications Department also falls within Resident Services. It is responsible for keeping the community connected and informed. Led by Communications Manager Janet Fowler, it manages a network of communication systems from creating and printing campus flyers to committee and interest group publications. The Communication Components of the Resident Services Communication Management Team also coordinate schedules and bookings for resident events, maintains the resident directory, and acts as the nucleus for the Whitney Center's social media version of my WC life. From the programming side, the department also assists residents with special projects, secures onsite live and virtual program experiences, as well as in partnership with the IT department explores and introduces innovative enhancements that help us to not only work together more effectively, but encourages us to offer even better services than we do right now. As we emerge from the trappings of COVID, we see that things are making a comeback, and I think the best part of that is that spring is also making its way forward toward a new dawn. So throw away your inhibitions and just be ready for an exciting spring. We would start with Simone Lana, our wonderful Italian virtual tour guide. Will be joining us again, but this time, he will be heading to Egypt on Tuesdays at 4:30 in the CAC. Our first tour will be on Tuesday, March 29th. Simone will speak to us live from Rome once again and give us the stories of the great women of ancient Egypt. And then on Tuesday, April 12th at 4:30, he will introduce us to King Tut's family. So we're very excited about that. So the global travel does not stop there in Egypt or in Rome. I am extremely pleased to announce Whitney Center has signed a licensing agreement with Seven Art Productions. This is a highly acclaimed production house out of Brighton, England, founded by a British filmmaker, award-winning filmmaker Philip Grabsky. What I'm most excited about is that these documentaries are works in and of themselves. They're absolutely beautiful. They provide in-depth, not only about the stories behind the art and the artist, but the venue's perspective of how installations are planned and installed. What's also very exciting is because of this licensing agreement, these are not shows or films that are necessarily open to the public. They're only usually, think of it as an IMAX presentation in which you would have to buy a ticket for. These are coming to Whitney Center to all of you at no cost, which is very, very, very exciting. I am going to be producing a calendar of the presentations with brief overviews, so you'll see them and be able to plan your calendars ahead. We're looking at doing that even for some of the film productions, as well as perhaps even lectures. So you get a calendar view of maybe up to two months to three months in advance, so you know what's happening instead of waiting for the weekly calendar. But one of the first productions, films that you'll see, maybe some of you had seen the movie War Horse, this is the making of War Horse on March 22nd. Then we have premiered which of films that have not yet been released. Exhibition on Screen is Easter in Art on April 5th. Tim Marlowe, who's a wonderful British historian, meets crime writer Ian Rankin. Tim Marlowe meets Rene Fleming. Exhibition on Screen, Passaro, Father of Impressionism. It's not been seen before. You will be seeing it before everyone else. Exhibition on Screen, Sunflowers, which looks interesting because it takes you to five different museums to see how they are displaying and installing their presentation of Van Gogh's amazing work. In Search of Haydn. Some of you may have seen the In Search of Composers series. This is the production company that actually produces them. That will be here on July 5th. And the Great Artist Series of Giato, which will be on July 19th. So we're really, really, really excited about that. Another special part, and again, this is all going to be happening within the next couple of months to give you a preview of what programming at Whitney Center really is all about. Another special part of the programming component, especially for me, is working on special projects with individual residents. I'm happy to say that Steve Gurney is preparing to offer another special evening of film and music. That date is to be determined, but that's coming up soon. Also, Leah Stambler has established the Heritage Project, featuring timely national and international cultural events, celebrations, and notable individual achievements. Displays are featured on Main Street, and a Heritage Project reading table is now located on the sixth floor common. Please reach out to Leah if you have something that you would like to share. A few residents have asked about museum visits, and I'll be setting up a trip interest table in the next few weeks down at the Bistro to get a sense of where residents would like to go. Also, as a reminder, there is an opera on Saturday, March 12th, and one on March 26th. If you are purchasing your tickets, you can purchase them online through MetLife or through Cinemark. If you have any difficulty purchasing tickets, please let me know as well, and I will be happy to help you to do that. On next Saturday, Orchestra New Haven will be performing at the Unitarian Church. Tickets are available by going to the Orchestra New Haven website as well. Since this, and like any other Saturday trip, Whitney Center will provide transportation providing, a resident lets us know, and there will be a transportation fee attached to that. Also, great news if you haven't already heard, the Yale Gallery is now open to visitors without advanced ticket reservations. The gallery is open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, 10 to 5 p.m., and Thursday, 10 to 8 p.m. If you would like to go, please consider this to be a cultural shopping trip. Whitney Center Transportation is welcoming the chance to just drop you off down at the museum on Chapel Street. You don't need to make any other kind of reservation. You know the museum is free, as well as the Center for British Art. So if you're just looking for a trip and you're spontaneous and say to your friends, "Hey, let's go visit the Yale Gallery," just hop on the bus, and we can drop you off and then pick you up, so without any reservations for any special shows. All of this wonderful programming could not come in a more perfect time. As I mentioned earlier, the communications component of getting the word out here at Whitney Center is an extraordinary task. It does take a lot of people to do that. And being the best we can be at doing just that is what drives our mission. In previous meetings, I've mentioned that IT and administration has been reviewing ways to share information through more enhanced methods based on what we've observed, what we've learned, and the practice use. So I am really pleased to say that Raphael will be sharing those updates with you at the next town meeting. It's going to be, as I said, an exciting spring, and one of the things that we will do even better is getting the word out to you and letting you know what is going on. One last item. An email was shared with the community yesterday afternoon regarding moving cars due to the pending forecast, and that will start today at 3 o'clock. Please see Gil or notify either reception desk if you have a confirmed need to access your car tomorrow morning. This way, Gil can appropriately place your car in a more than accessible space. If you have any other questions, please see me after the town meeting, and I would like to turn the mic over to Thomas. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Oh, that's... No, we're still in bed. Good morning, everyone.
Hi.
All right. Good to see you. Good, good, good. All right. For anyone who doesn't know me, my name is Thomas Hudson. I'm the Director of Dining Services. The report I'd like to give today, there's a question that comes with it. I can give you the bad news first, or the good news first, or as the saying goes, no news is good news. Which are we going for? The bad news first? Let's get it out of the way. Over the last year, last two years, we've seen a ridiculous increase in food prices. Right? I'm sure everybody has seen it. It is outrageous. However, for the past two years, we've been eating that cost. We have not extended anything in our prices here, and unfortunately, at this time, I will be doing a review of our prices over the next month with the eventuality of some, let me put it this way, some minor price increases in our second quarter. We will obviously discuss this through our dining committee, so it is done in the right way, and that everybody sees and knows how we're going about this and what the increase will look like. I'm trying to make it as soft as possible on our pockets, but it needs to be reasonable and fair on both sides. So I just wanted to get that in front of you, so you know we're looking at our prices and we're expecting to have some increases in the second quarter of this year. All right? Bad news out the way. Are we still okay? We made it through. All right. Just a couple of things I wanted to share with you this morning. Most people see that Peggy Joyce, over the past couple of weeks, kind of relaxed our stance on seating, so the dining room, our center stage dining room, has been reconfigured, and we're now able to accommodate seating from two to eight. We do have one eight-seater that, we don't really have a lot of need for it, but we do have people who sometimes have seven people or eight people in a group, and that is where we would seat you. One thing we've done over the last week is I've introduced a second community table at 5 o'clock. All right? So at 5 o'clock, we can now seat 10 people at the community table. We have two tables of five. Some people are still asking why not six, and I'll explain. We've watched the trends. A lot of our residents who come at 5 o'clock come in wheelchairs, and when you try to seat six people with wheelchair, with two or three wheelchairs, it gets very cumbersome. It's a little close, and it's a little uncomfortable. So we rather keep it at five seats, and I've introduced two tables. We have a 6:30 community table, which will seat six people. So in all, we're now seating 16 people for community service, which, if anyone doesn't know, that means you don't need a reservation. You come in at that specific time. The service is yours and yours alone. We're not waiting for anyone else to serve you. You get served as you come. You sit at the community table. Any questions on that? Nope? All right, we'll move along. There's been a couple of changes to the hours of the corner store. Corner store is now open from 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock, Monday to Friday. We had to pull back a little on our intention of opening on a Saturday, but it's not off the cards. It's going to happen a little down the road. We're just going through the process, getting things organized as they are now, and then we'll look at introducing a Saturday opening and what that will look like and its purpose. We're hoping to tie that in with some sort of farmer's market and that sort of thing on a Saturday, which should be pretty cool. The Bistro, we, I've made some adjustments to the bistro menus. We've had a lot of conversation over the past month about salt intake. I know there are a lot of people who are interested in knowing if something has a certain amount of salt. Now, while I'm not able to give you the exact amount, what we've done is we've indicated on every item on our bistro menu if there is no salt or if it's no salt added. Now, some things are products which are bought in. We don't add any salt to it. So those will indicate no salt added. It doesn't mean there is no sodium, but we are not adding any. There are some that we do add salt with the recipe, just a few, but most will have either a no sodium indication or a no sodium added. So look out for those little items on the bistro menu. It'll take a couple of days. We need to laminate the new menus, and we'll try to get them out sometime next week. All right? Over the next two weeks, I'm going to produce a document in the form of a memo, which I will send out to every resident, which will give you an overview of our plans for the rest of this year. We have a lot of exciting things that Dining wants to do and introduce. We've been having some conversations with my team. They've come up with some fantastic ideas, and I'm looking forward to sharing them with you. Just to whet your appetite, one of the items is we're looking at, and this one I'm really excited about. So I would encourage you in this room, and I'd encourage you to tell your friends to get their favorite recipe ready and handy. Your personal recipe. We're going to be doing some work with the residents this year. We're going to be doing something that may be coming out of the corner store, but I won't tell you exactly yet, but get your best recipe ready with the details to it. I'm going to be calling on you soon for something. All right? If you have any questions on that, I have no answers. I will not tell you anymore. So overall, another thing I'd like to share with you is we are looking at the prospect of a pop-up restaurant, which may be a monthly restaurant that will pop up in the private dining room. It'll be a specific seating. It'll be a set price, and it'll be a menu completely different to everything, to anything that exists. It'll be like a special event that'll just pop up once a month. The menu will be completely different. We'll have it with pairings of wine or a cocktail and so on. So that'll be a real exciting thing we're looking at. Lots of stuff coming up. My team is working hard behind the scenes to find new and innovative ways to offer you dining experiences. All right? For today, that's all I had. Unless anyone has anything for me or questions for me, then I shall take my leave, and I shall do so with my regular applause. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good day.
Wow. From what I've heard already from all of the speakers, I want to move into Whitney Center. Does anybody want a buddy? Okay. We're going to move on to clinical updates, and I'd like to welcome Michelle Stocking.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Michelle Stocking. I am the supervisor of assisted living here at Whitney Center. I have a very short and sweet update for everyone. There is currently no COVID among all residents and team members across the campus. But of course, it is still out there, so please still... But of course, it is still out there, so please still be careful and cautious to protect yourselves and those around you. Is there any questions for me? We are still wearing our masks, yes. Good question. I'm hoping, though, that that's gonna change soon. We'll be talking amongst the clinical team, and the numbers are going down. The positivity rate out in the community is decreasing, so that's, it's possible that the mask recommendation will be loosened soon. I don't know any more than that, but yes. Thank you.
And now, representing Enrichment Services, I'd like to call on Maria LaSala and bring her back to the podium.
Hi again, friends. I'm making this report on behalf of Michelle Pandolphy. The Enrichment Services team consists of the Community Resource Team and the Thrive at Home program here at Whitney Center. So I'll begin with the Community Resource Team. As your spiritual coordinator, I am available, I think you know this, to talk with you about life and spiritual matters. I want to highlight two programs that are coming up in March that might be of interest to you. The Christian season of Lent begins on March 2nd. That's next Wednesday. I will be offering a brief prayer service in the private dining room that morning, but throughout the day, I will be in the private dining room for any residents who wish to receive ashes and have a prayer said. And on March 17th, residents are invited to celebrate the Festival of Purim. Purim is the story of Queen Esther's bravery and courage, how she almost single-handedly saved her people. It's a great story with noise makers, lots of cheers, and lots of booze, because there's always a villain. And yes, if you're curious, ham and tush and cookies will be served. This is going to take place in the pub and living room area. You'll hear more details about all of the spiritual care programs happening. They're always listed in your weekly My Whitney Center Life calendar. Other members of the Community Resource Team are Laura Sorenson, our Well-being Coordinator, and you know Laura. She is always available to address any emotional concerns that you might have, and you need only to reach out to Laura to speak with her. And Robert Schmelzer, our exercise physiologist, and his team address your movement and fitness health. Robert wanted me to share with you that the movement and fitness programs continue to have great attendance, and all the programs can be found on the event's calendar. Congratulations, Whitney Center. Robert is inviting you to consider joining one of the classes, or one of the walks, or one of the many sessions that are offered in the fitness center and the pool area. And as always, you're invited to reach out to Justin, Jackie, or Robert with any questions. Last, but not least, your liaisons, Mary, Wanda, and Debbie are here to address your questions and help you navigate through Whitney Center. I know how grateful we all are for their presence at Whitney Center. The Thrive at Home program is a membership program designed to provide life care for people who prefer to stay in their homes or are not yet ready to move to a campus like Whitney Center. And with the benefit of 24-hour, seven-day-a-week care, they get that coordinated through the Thrive at Home program. So Michelle Pandolphy wanted you to know that the membership of Thrive at Home continues to grow. This month, Thrive at Home welcomed four new members. Francesco Iacello of Hamden, Diana Pachetta Omen of New Haven, Sarah Oli of New Haven, and Judith Sandberg of Boca Raton. Does that name sound familiar? There are two more applications in process, and so at the end of this month, the membership at Thrive at Home has 73 active members and 84 all overall. Good news to share with you today. Thanks. Thanks, Teri.
Thanks so much, Maria. Okay, Sean O'Connor, our Vice President of Marketing, has asked me to share his report with you. Currently, there are 18 apartments available for reservation. 62% are one or studio apartments, 38% are two-bedroom. 16 apartments are available in the north building and five in the south. Releases remain higher than projected for the year. There are currently eight apartments reserved, of which six are approved, and two are going through the process of approval. Two new residents have moved in since our last town hall meeting, and we're anticipating two more new residents this month. The team has taken four new reservations since our last town hall. Occupancy is averaging 88%. And to date, we have moved in two residents in this year and both moved into the south building. Thrive at Home has four new members and three applications out, and you just cited the numbers, and events continue to go well with Thrive at Home. And this is a reminder that our Health Center is open to the community outside of Whitney Center, not just residents, so you can share that information with friends or those you know in the community. And the Health Center has been maintaining a census of around 32 for 35 beds and continues to be a preferred provider by Yale. So that's a good report. And I'm, for philanthropy, I just want to share with you that the Grant Selection Review Committee, which is made up of residents, for the last two weeks, the committee has been interviewing recipients of past grants to ask them for their feedback. You know, can we improve the application process? How can we get more staff to apply, attract their interest, and so on? So that's been going well, and I want to thank Nick. He's been also sitting in on some of the conversations and videotaping them. So our plan is to put together a package and then share that with you and the rest of our team members to, again, attract and also announce that applications will be opening up. We'll have the applications, we'll get the word out on March 1st, and then the deadline for team members to complete their applications will be May 1st. So that's moving along as planned for the year. And now I'd like to turn it over to Anne Matisse, representing Finance, for her report.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name's Anne Matisse. I'm the controller, which just means that I run the day-to-day of the Business Services Department. It's not as fancy as it sounds. The first few months of the year are always really busy for us. Of course, it's tax season. Everybody should have received their annual tax letter at this point. If you need another copy or you'd like a copy forwarded to your accountant, please feel free to reach out. We're happy to help with that. We can also provide you with what we call a resident ledger, which gives you a statement of all of your expenses for the year, both in the apartment and in the Health Center, if that's appropriate. We're happy to provide that as well. Just reach out to Jennifer Centauri, and she'll get it emailed or delivered to your apartment right away. Another thing that keeps us busy is our annual audit. The auditors are in-house for the next several days. It's going well. We anticipate it being done within the next couple of weeks, and the financials for 2021 will be presented to the Finance Committee and the Board in March. Last item is normally Medicare coverage doesn't change. We have all of your Medicare identification numbers. However, if you participate in a Medicare Advantage Plan or if you have supplementary insurance, there is a chance that that changed on January 1st. Please double-check with your insurance if you have new cards. We need, we would like to have copies of them in the business office so that we can post them on your profile and make sure that we bill the appropriate insurance for you. So please just make sure we have your current information for the year of 2022. But that's it. That's all the exciting things. I know, you were riveted waiting for me to come up. Do you have any questions, anybody? Okay, have a great day.
Thanks, Anne. So lots of activity at Whitney Center. Anyone from Residence Council? Okay, all right. So with that, we can close unless you have some, some questions? No? Okay, we're gonna wrap this up and go back to our, our work, and have a great day. All right?